Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Aston Township Board of Commissioners meeting to order for Tuesday, July 21st, 2021. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to deviate from the schedule. The agenda tonight for Time Matters is... Okay. We're going to, under new business, line item D, consider a motion to appoint Kelly Ann Pippen to the position of Township Secretary. Are you ready to read that?
Sure. I make a motion to appoint Kelly Ann Pippen to the position of Township Secretary with the annual compensation rate of $7,000 in the form of a motion.
Any second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations, Kelly. Can you step forward to be sworn in, please, by the Honorable Diane Holfelder? Congratulations. Thank you, Your Honor, for being here tonight.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mm-hmm. Totally understand. All right, I'd like to move on to normal proceedings here, review and approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 16th, 2021. Any motion? Second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I also want to announce that there were executive session meetings to discuss personnel matters and legislation on, prior to this meeting, on July, and also on July 16th, July 12th, building, testing, redemptions, and 6:30 for the same issue. So we had some personnel things we had who couldn't advertise, so I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. All right, moving on to proclamations, I'd like to call on Commissioner McGinn for the first one, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Stigall. So it's nice and honored to be able to read a proclamation in honor of somebody that's a Second Ward resident and doing great things in Aston Township. So I'm going to read this proclamation and then ask Jack and his family to come up and present them with a plaque and an award. So this is a declaration or proclamation from the Township of Aston. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners Township of Aston Delaware County, Pennsylvania, desires to honor Jack Wendling on his promotion to Eagle Scout. And whereas, Jack is the son of William and Diane Wendling, Jack resides in Aston Township and is a 2020 Sun Valley High School graduate. And whereas, Jack earned 30 merit badges, including an ATV rider course at Resica Falls Summer Camp. Jack has served his troupe in a number of leadership positions, including patrol leader in a senior year, assistant patrol leader, and quartermaster. Jack also served as an adult leader in the fall of 2020. And whereas, Jack's Eagle Scout project was for the Aston Township group, Neighbors Helping Neighbors. Jack oversaw the construction of a collection bin that is located at the Aston Township Community Center. Jack ran a good drive where 1,482 non-perishable items were collected and boxed on March 14th, 2020, right before the COVID-19 shutdown. And whereas, Jack was awarded the rank of Eagle Scout on October 14th, 2020, over a Zoom call due to the COVID-19 restrictions. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners recognizes Jack Wendling duly proclaimed this 21st day of July 2020... (cough) Excuse me. 2021. Jack, glad that we're able to do this in person now that, you know, we're back to more normal things from the COVID times. So let's hear a round of applause for Jack, and please come up.
Congratulations. Okay, moving on to another proclamation, I'm going to call on Commissioner Higgins, please.
Thank you. Is Nicholas here tonight? Okay. As Commissioner McGinn said, it's always nice to give an award out to somebody that's in your ward, and in this case, the Seventh Ward. So let me read the proclamation. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners Township of Aston Delaware County, Pennsylvania, desires to honor Nicholas Sikorski on his promotion to Eagle Scout. And whereas Nicholas is the grandson of Tina Adams and the brother of Chris and Alex Sikareski... Did I say that right? Nicholas graduated from Sun Valley High School in 2020. And whereas Nicholas earned 28 merit badges and also served his troupe in a number of leadership positions, including patrol leader, assistant patrol leader, and quartermaster. And whereas Nicholas' Eagle Scout project included painting of some houses at Chester Heights Camp Meeting, located in Chester Heights, to help the Aston Township Historical Society. And whereas Nicholas' interview and involvement goes beyond scouting. As a student at Sun Valley, Nicholas played football for four years and was on the wrestling team for three years. Nicholas played Aston AA basketball, starting at Pennell Elementary through high school. And whereas Nicholas was awarded the rank of Eagle Scout on February 26th, 2020, at the Delaware County Courthouse in Media, Pennsylvania. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners recognizes Nicholas Sikorski duly proclaimed this 21st day of June 2021. Congratulations, Nick.
Congratulations. Okay, at this time, I'd like to move on to committee reports. I'm going to call on Commissioner Dougherty, please.
Okay, I have two reports to read this evening. The first is the police report for June 2021. Incidents handled: 541. Accident investigations: 25. Criminal investigations: 37. Criminal cases cleared: 12. Total citations issued: 65. Now on to the treasures report. Total cash in the general fund as of June 30th, 2021 was $6,53,184.88. Other funds include the TD Bank Bond Fund Checking Account, with a balance of $5,861,546.23. The TD Bank Matching Grant Checking Account, with a balance of $408,82.59. The TD Bank Capital Checking Account, with a balance of $724,153.50. And the TD Bank Liquid Fuels Checking Account, with a balance of $552,998.57. Total cash balance for the township as of June 30th, 2021 was $13,883,862.2. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Dougherty. Commissioner Penday Grace, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Stigall. This is the Public Works Director's Activity Report for June 2021. The following report highlights the main activity of the Public Works Department, which consists of Director of Public Works Russ Palomar and the Highway Department. All metal was picked up throughout the township. The metal was taken to International Scrap in Chester, PA. This is always picked up the first full week of the month in a residence normal trash day. All vehicles were maintained and serviced. 95% of maintenance repairs on vehicles all completed in-house by our highways to mechanics. Tim Weist reported all streetlight issues to Lenni Electric for replacement of repair. All streetlights throughout the township have been converted to LED. All township parks have branches and trash picked up by the Highway Department. All small engine repairs are completed in-house, saving our taxpayer or township money. Bill Sorosi and Tim Weist reviewed and recorded all eight 11 call sheets. Approximately 200 call sheets were sent to our Director of Public Works this month. These call sheets show where people and businesses plan to dig in our community to prevent machines and people from damaging our electric, gas, and stormwater systems. Each system is marked by the service provider at least three days prior to date allowed to dig. The township is responsible for all stormwater systems. These systems are marked with green paint. Each service has its own color representing the location and type of service underground. 16 potholes were filled using a half-ton of cold-packed asphalt. New Lane Bowards were installed on Bridgewater Road near Judy Way. A new post and rail fence was installed at Gordonville Park, and the playground area was mulched. Two small trees were removed from the community center's small lot. Rose bushes were removed from parking outlets at the community center, and new plants and shrubs were planted. The island was also felled and mulched. Two "Watch Children" signs were installed near Woodbrook Park. A new outlet sign was installed on North Lampoast Lane entering the cul-de-sac. The damaged brick inlet at Giles and Connie were replaced using new concrete box and caps. The inlet at Richard and Tuskanning was repaired. Vascar lines and speed humps were painted. Clear fallen trees from Fisher Park Trail and Stone were added to trail entrances where stormwater washed out trail. The river birches at Weir Park were trimmed. Two new trash cans were installed at Woodbrook Park. The sewer line at the municipal building was repaired with the insistence of Purdy Plumbing. Branch pickup started the first full week of the month, along with metal pickup. Our sanitation department picked up 88.72 tons of recycling in the month of June. 619.69 tons of residential waste were also picked up this month by sanitation department. Remember that the first full week is metal appliance week and branch pickup. Bulk trash week does not exist anymore. Anything that can burn can be put out in the trash. Please have your trash at the curb by 6:00 AM on your designated trash day. Any questions or complaints, contact Russ Palomar, Director of Public Works, at 610-494-8005. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Penday Grace. Commissioner Berry, anything?
I have nothing, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Stigall. I have two reports. First one is the Permits and Licenses Report dated July 12th, 2021. Beginning balance: $573,245. Total income from building permits and general contractors licenses: $227,304. Total electrical permits and licenses: $26,185. Total plumbing and heating: $15,336. Income from board of health licenses: $500. There was no income from peddlers or vendors licenses, and there's no income from commercial inspections. Income from certificates of occupancy: $3,850. Income from rental licenses: $75. Total revenue collected for the month: $273,250. Total for 2021 is $846,495, and that compares to June of 2020, where it was $315,397. That's all I have for the permits, and then I have a land development update. First one is on the Aston Dairy Queen. The property owner where the Aston Dairy Queen is located at 5031 Pennell Road has made a preliminary final land development application for proposed building alterations. The proposed site improvements include expansion of the current building envelope to accommodate a drive-through facility, a drive-through lane, expanded parking, expanded outdoor seating, and stormwater management. The applicant previously appeared at the Aston Township Planning Commission on June 23, 2021, and at New Construction Committee on July 6, 2021, to review Delaware County Planning Commission comments and the Aston Township Engineers Plan Review comments. Both the Planning Commission and the New Construction Committee requested the applicant to return for a final plan review due to a significant number of site plan safety and traffic concerns that needed to be addressed. Also, there are owner-operator questions that still need to be answered about the expansion. The Planning Commission is expected to meet again on this application on Wednesday, August 25th, 2021, at 7:00 PM, and the New Construction Committee on Tuesday, September 7, 2021, at 6:30 PM. The meeting locations are yet to be determined and will be published in newsprint on the Township website and the Township Facebook page, and the public will be invited to attend and comment. The next one is related to the Newman University Campus Master Plan. Newman University and the Sisters of St. Francis of Philadelphia, on July 6, 2021, announced the signing of a purchase agreement on June 30th on the sale of Our Lady of the Angels convent and other historic properties and contiguous land to the university. This is part of the overall campus master plan. As such, a conditional use hearing for the university to utilize the existing convent structure to provide student dormitory and administrative offices is required. The hearing will be held a little later tonight during the meeting. Additionally, the Sisters of St. Francis will appear in front of the Aston Township Zoning Hearing Board on Tuesday, July 22nd, 2021, to seek zoning relief on a parcel of ground that is being subdivided with a lotline adjustment. The variance is requested for a side yard setback. This is also part of the sale of property to the university. The hearing will start at 7:00 PM, and the public is invited to attend and may comment. And the location of that meeting will have to be announced a little bit later. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Bowden?
I have the first, or I had the fire report. June 2021, year-to-date, first 63 fire calls for the month, year-to-date, 366. EMS calls: 161, year-to-date, 908. Total calls: 224, year-to-date, 1,274. Monthly drills: 3, year-to-date, 18. And I also have a report from the Senior Citizens Group. I spoke with the current president of the Aston Senior Citizens, and it's with a very sad conversation. The organization is about to fold. They don't have any volunteers to serve as officers on their board of directors. So Mrs. Schatzman asked me to reach out to the public, which I'm doing tonight. Anyone that would like to serve as an officer for the senior citizens of Aston Township can reach out to Josephine Schatzman at 610-497-2884. Otherwise, if they don't get anybody, there will be no Aston Senior Citizens effective next month. And then I have a report from Aston Township Park and Rec. Mark a calendars, we're going to do a movie night, August 19th, Thursday, at the community center, rain or shine, outside or inside. We'll be having refreshments available, water ice, pretzels, popcorn, and a great movie. It appears that we're going to be... Am I going to say this right, Joe? Croons?
Croons.
Croons is going to be the movie. I haven't seen it. We had a debate between Joe's children and my grandchildren, and his kids won because they had more votes than my grandchildren. So my granddaughter wanted the last dragon.
Raya.
Raya, the last dragon, so we're going to go with Croons. So come on up to the community center on the 19th of August, Thursday night, and see a movie. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowden. Commissioner McGinn?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Commissioner McGinn. All right, I need to make a motion to approve the treasures report. Any questions? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Ayes have it. I need a motion to approve the bills and payroll report. You have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor to the public for agenda items only. If you have something that's on the agenda, you can step to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening. I think this is in regard to item B, which is that...
Your name?
My name is Adam Sivillage. I live at 638 Convent Road. So my concern is we're not having a meeting next month in August, so this meeting seems to me to be of increased importance. Because we're not having a meeting next month, and also because of the public hearings we're having regarding the Newman property. So what I'm concerned about, as a taxpayer and as a taxpayer to the Pendelco School District, is the fact that both meetings, public meetings, the Pendelco School District Board meeting is tonight at this time, begins at 7:30, and this meeting also is concurrent. Or, I'm sorry, it's happening at the same time. I think this is concerning, and I'm hoping we can do something to prevent this in the future.
Yeah, that's something that we might be able to discuss with the school board, but we've always been having our meetings at this time.
It's been like this as long as I've been on the board, and that's 16 years, and it predates me by many years. It's always been the third Wednesday of the month. So I can't speak for the school board what they do, but, you know, this is pretty much in concrete.
I understand that, and I understand that the school district is a separate entity. However, I just...
Adam, I'm going to interrupt you for one minute. Previously, the school board used to meet on Mondays. When I served on the school board, they changed their meetings probably 18 years ago to the Wednesday, you know, due to conflicts with other people. I think you're just being honest that these meetings have always been on the Wednesday. Maybe you need to address that to the school district.
I entirely agree, and I had intended to be there this evening.
Okay.
Except that this meeting seemed to be more important.
Okay. You have a question on the agenda?
No, that is it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else questions on the agenda? All right, seeing none, I'm going to move on to Commissioner Higgins, please, for placing the meeting and send aye.
I'd like to make a motion to place the meeting and send aye.
I have a second question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. At this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to our solicitor, Beth Ann Altenbeck.
Thank you, President Stigall. On your agenda tonight is the conditional use application of Newman University to use the existing convent structure to provide student dormitory and administration offices. This property is currently zoned in the institutional district. The Township zoning code provides that in the institutional district, use as a college or university and use as a dormitory is permitted by conditional use. Prior to tonight's hearing, notice of this, prior to tonight, notice of this hearing was advertised in the July 6th and July 13th editions of the Daily Times, and the property was posted. Present tonight for Newman University is Bill Leonard, the Director of Operations and Maintenance for Newman University. And I just, I could invite Mr. Leonard up. As Commissioner Higgins indicated earlier, currently, the subject piece of property is used as a convent, and that is a use permitted by right in the institutional district. But with the conveyance of the property, and it will, I understand, going to be used as a university for, in part, student housing, that's what necessitated Mr. Leonard's present here tonight.
That is correct.
Mr. Leonard, if you'd like to be sworn in, and then if you could explain to the commissioners what it is that the university intends to do with the building.
I do. Bill Leonard, Director of Facilities at Newman University. The question was, what does the university intend to do with the convent upon final sale, final purchase of the property? It's the intent of the university to convert the, just use the existing space that's now housing the Sisters to house students, resident students on campus.
Okay. When, can you give the commissioners an idea as to timeframe as to when all things going as planned, the conveyance will take place, and then what your plan is in terms of transitioning students into the building?
I believe the sale will, I suspect the sale will be completed sometime this fiscal year or this calendar year, excuse me. The movement of students into that space right now, I do not anticipate that until probably fall, August of 2022.
And as part of that process, will the university be complying with all applicable building and code regulations before the students are moved into the building?
Yes, we will.
Are there any other planned renovations to the structure?
Right now, clean the carpet and paint the walls.
And I'm just going to...
Add some furniture.
Okay, furniture. And I do have to ask this, only because it's a conditional use hearing. Mr. Leonard, in your opinion, is the proposed new use of the building appropriate for the site in question?
Yes, it is.
And is this proposed new use compatible with the character of the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes, it is.
And do you believe it will adversely affect traffic flow or parking in the area?
I do not.
Okay. Those are the questions that I have. Commissioners, if you have any questions?
Commissioner Dougherty, you have any questions? Commissioner Penday Grace? Commissioner Berry? Commissioner Higgins?
Of course. What can I say? Hello, Mr. Leonard, how you doing tonight?
I'm well, sir.
Good to see you. Just three fairly easy questions. Obviously, as I read the campus plan and so forth, this will help expand the student population down the road? Yes?
Correct.
People have asked me, so just curiosity as to what is the goal for expansion?
The overall enrollment right now would stay, will stay the same, or the goal stays the same. It's about 450 incoming students per year, but the focus is trying to get more students to live on campus.
Okay. Okay. Next one is, there's a basement dining facility in the convent. I've had lunch there many times, over there with St. Joseph's when they've had Day of Reflections and so forth. Is that still going to be in use? If so, will be for students at all?
Initially, I would say no. We will continue to use the dining hall we have in Brewder Gym, or Brewder, in the Brewder Building, and the Nice Cafe in the Bachmann Building. The, that internal operation will have to be assessed and then adapted in the future. At that point, we will get the permits and make the plans as required.
Okay, thank you. And just overall, what is the condition of the current infrastructure in the convent, specifically the upper floors? specifically the upper floors?
Currently, where the sisters are right now, and where, in the spiritual center, where the students would go in the future, it's, it's in, it's in good shape. Heat pumps tied to a cooling tower, no chiller involved, structurally sound. Like I said, extract the carpet and paint. But the restrooms, the plumbing looks tight, the boilers are tight. So, I think, physically, I think it's in good shape.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other question? Commissioner Bowden, any questions?
I just love the convent. I absolutely love the history there. And my question would be, what are you going to do with all the beautiful furnishings and woodworking that are in the building at the current time?
That will all stay. I mean, we're really, we will change the rooms where the students would live, but the administration areas, the chapel, all that work, that all will remain. The sisters are still going to be very present in that space, and, you know, and so that, we don't envision any changes with that. You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner McGinn, anything?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Mr. Leonard, first, congrats on the acquisition and the expansion. So, how many students will reside, or what's the plan there in the building?
The sisters are still housed in there, and there's, what, it's a five years? I understand it, there's a five-year trans, you know, time for the sisters to transition to their next location. The space that's available right now would be in the, in the spiritual center. You're looking at anywhere, you know, maybe a maximum of 100.
In the, in the five-year, once you get to the five-year period and transition?
Once I get to five years, I then have to check that out.
Okay.
I have not really checked those spaces out, because they're being housed, they're being utilized right now by the sisters, so.
And how many current students are, are, live on campus?
I believe there's about 800.
Okay.
900 students who live on campus.
And then, with the, the acquisition, I think you, did I hear right, that there's going to be offices in there as well?
There are existing offices in there, and they will, over the course of time, probably be transitioned to university offices, yes.
Okay. So, will that create any, any new jobs, or move any new jobs into Aston Township?
Not that I can anticipate at this time.
Okay. And then, from a property tax standpoint, does that transition or change anything from a property tax standpoint for the parcel? Either, you know, increase property taxes or decrease them? I know on the education side, it's a little fuzzy for me, but, you know, certain things are taxed from property, certain things are ineligible to be taxed.
Not my bailiwick.
Okay.
I suspect they're both tax exempt, but I can't, I'm not sure.
Sure.
You all done?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fiscuzzo?
Yeah, I just want, one bit of housekeeping, so we're all on the same page with this, is that, you heard the board, they don't meet in August, so the first consideration for the subdivision plan will be at the September meeting. So, just so you kind of know that that's, and I think-
I know there's the planning commission, or the zoning and the planning next month, then next week, and then September.
Right. Yeah, just kind of, that thing seems to fit in with your schedule of sometime in the fall anyway, but-
Yes.
So, the board won't be able to contemplate the subdivision until it's September.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any questions from the public? Sure.
My name is Adam Civilich. I live on Convent Road.
Oh, yeah.
Down the street from the convent. So, I have two main concerns, which are traffic and parking. I live next door to one of the college houses. I don't think it's an official residence in the convent, but college students do live there, and they have five dedicated parking spaces as a parking lot on their property. And during certain times of the year, they take up between one and two lots worth of on-street parking. My point being, the students take up a lot of parking. I assume that's more parking than, that, as they're currently taking. Likewise, the traffic going into this area are very narrow roads, like Convent Road, which is a blind turn, only one car, one car width wide once people have parked there, and Red Hill Road and Legion Road. So, I am concerned about how this will impact traffic and parking, and I'm curious what third-party studies have been done to assess the impact it's going to have on the community where I live.
Concerning the question about parking, I don't anticipate, I believe with its location being on campus, the location of the convent being on campus, I would anticipate the students would park on campus. There's parking right there at Flynn Hall, there's also parking right there at the convent. So, I don't anticipate the students who would be living in the convent would be parking on the street.
And regards to traffic?
Regards to traffic, I would have to, I would have to investigate that.
I would like that there be some sort of independent study performed, because college students that live on campus, I'm sorry, college students that go to campus, they drive in, they drive out. College students that live on campus drive in, drive out, drive to the store, drive to the bar, drive to another store, they drive all over the place.
But that's not at this stage.
Truth, to and from the convent on these residential roads. So, I'm concerned about the increased traffic. I'm going to see it on my street, which again, is very narrow, somewhat dangerous perhaps to begin with, and doesn't have sidewalk.
Understood.
Okay. I appreciate you bringing those points. Newman has been very gracious in handling the needs of the community and neighbors. They've been very helpful in trying to resolve some issues, so I'm glad you got, were able to get that on record. And as we move further in the process, you can always input some other thoughts. Any other questions from the public? We're done.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a public hearing on the proposed ordinance to repeal Section 1282.05B5A5 of the Aston Township Codified Ordinance. This is the current ordinance that prohibits mobile stands in the limited industrial and planned business campus districts. Pursuant to Section 609 of the municipality's planning code, public notice of tonight's hearing was advertised in the July 6th and 13th editions of the Daily Times. We have also advertised notice of consideration that the ordinance amendment will be passed tonight. This is the proposed ordinance of the township in order to clarify two matters. One, we currently have conflicting regulations. In our sign ordinance, it both prohibits and allows mobile, mobile signs in the limited industrial and planned business campus districts. So, the ordinance committee sat and met, and then they made recommendations to the Board of Commissioners with respect to repealing the prohibition. This is something that is allowed by permit, so the consensus was that there really was no objection to allowing a permitted mobile sign in the LI and planned business campus districts. So, for that reason, the proposed ordinance is before you for consideration tonight, but before we do so, we're having this hearing in the event, there's, the commissioners have any further questions, or if members of the public have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Dockerty, anything? Commissioner Pendegras?
No.
Commissioner Berry?
No, no questions.
Commissioner Higgins?
None.
Commissioner Bowden?
No, I have not.
Commissioner McGinn?
No questions.
Mr. Fiscuzzo? Anyone from the public? Just trying to clean up some things, make it cut and dry rather than a gray area. So, seeing no questions, we're through.
Back to closing the hearing.
Thank you. I'd like to call on Commissioner Higgins, please.
Yes, thank you. Consider a motion to take the meeting out of sendai.
Second.
Second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right, moving on to old business. Line item A, consider an ordinance repealing paragraph 1282.05B5A5, signs and mobile stands. Commissioner Berry?
Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, ordinance number 1015. An ordinance of the Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, previously adopted chapter 12, 128205 of the Aston Township Codified Ordinances, which identifies the types of signs and for which a permit is required. And whereas subsection B5A5 prohibits signs on mobile stands in limited industrial and planned business campus districts, and whereas the Board of Commissioners believe that allowing mobile signs on a permitted, permitted basis in the limited industrial and planned business districts benefits the businesses and the customers frequenting, frequenting these districts. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordained and enacted this 21st day of July 2021 by the Aston Township Board of Commissioners, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, that chapter 1282.05B5A5 of the Aston Township Codified Ordinance is hereby repealed. Effective date, this ordinance shall be effective immediately. Repeal or any prior ordinance or parts thereof inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Severability, the provisions of this ordinance and code sections adopted hereby are severable, and if any clause, sentence, or section thereof shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such decision or judgment shall not affect the validity of the remaining provisions. That's attested to by Kellye Pippin Township Secretary, by James M. Stigall, President, Board of Commissioners, John Dockerty, First Ward Commissioner, Joe McGinn, Second Ward Commissioner, myself, Third Ward, Fred Pendegras, Fourth Ward Commissioner, Nancy Bowden, Fifth Ward Commissioner, and Mike Hagan, Seventh Ward Commissioner. And that's in a form of a motion.
I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Line item B, consider an ordinance to amend chapter 1020 entitled "Excavations and Construction" to clarify repaving responsibilities. Commissioner Berry?
Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, ordinance number 1016. An ordinance of the Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, to amend the provisions of Aston Township Codified Ordinance, chapter 1020 entitled "Excavations and Construction" to clarify repaving responsibilities. Whereas the Aston Township Board of Commissioners previously adopted regulations governing the excavation and construction in relation to street openings, as set forth, as set forth in chapter 1020 of Aston Township's Codified Ordinance, and whereas the current regulations do not provide for sufficient guidance as to the requirements for repair and restoration of a sidewalk or street after such an opening or excavation, and whereas the Aston Township Board of Commissioners believe that providing more specific regulations will better suit the needs and expectations of the residents of Aston Township who drive and walk upon sidewalks and roadways throughout the township. Now, therefore, it be resolved this 21st day of July 2021, that chapter 1020 of the Aston Township Codified Ordinances entitled "Excavations and Construction" is hereby amended to reflect the following additions and/or revisions as set forth in the doc, in the documents, which is incorporated herein by reference, as if the same set forth at length. Effective date, this ordinance shall be effective within 10 days from the date of adoption. Repeal or any prior ordinance or parts of thereof inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Severability, the provisions of this ordinance and code sections adopted hereby are severable, and if any clause, sentence, or section thereof shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such decision or judgment shall not affect the validity of the remaining provisions. Attested to by Kellye Pippin Township Secretary, by James M. Stigall, President, John Dockerty, First Ward Commissioner, Jim McGinn, Second Ward Commissioner, myself, Third Ward, Fred Pendegras, Fourth Ward, Nancy Bowden, Fifth Ward, and Mike Hagan's Sixth Ward Commissioner. And that's in a form of a motion.
I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Under new business line item A, consider the conditional use request of Newman University to utilize the existing convent structure to provide student dormitory and administrative offices. Commissioner Higgins?
Consider the conditional use request of Newman University to utilize the existing convent structure to provide student dormitory and administrative offices in the form of a motion.
I have a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Line item B, announce a meeting in August. Commissioner McGinn?
I would like to- I would like to announce that there will be no public meeting held in the month of August 2021.
Thank you. Line item C, consider a motion authorizing the payment of invoices and payroll for the month of August. Commissioner Dockerty?
I make a motion to authorize the payment of invoices and payroll for the month of August 2021, due to there being no public meeting that month, in the form of a motion.
Second. I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Line item D, we did with the new Township Secretary, so line item E is, consider a resolution for submission of a flood mitigation grant, application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development. Commissioner Pendegras?
Thank you, Commissioner Stigall. Consider a resolution for submission of a flood mitigation grant, application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. Before I read this, I think I'll let Joe Fiscuzzo explain this grant, or this resolution.
Yes, thank you. And I did have some conversation with Mr. Marcos before the meeting to explain this to him. So, the township had previously adopted a resolution by the due date with the, with DCED, and that request was for a $250,000 grant. Through conversations that we had initiated by DCED, they came back to us and said that they thought we should increase the grant request amount to $350,000. So, this motion simply replaces the motion that you adopted, I think, at your, your May or June meeting, increasing the ask to DEP from 250,000 to 350,000. And as I explained to Mr. Marcos before the meeting, since the township's portion of the, of the, you know, the grant comes with a township portion and a, and the, the grant portion, township portion is, the township has to pay for the design, that we'll continue to work on the design, so that if and when the grant is, is announced in October or November, we'll be ready to go out to bid. If we don't get the grant, then the board will have to make, you know, whatever consideration that is from a budget standpoint at that time, so.
Okay. All right, now, I'll read the resolution. Authorize official resolution. Be it resolved that Aston Township of Delaware County hereby request a flood mitigation program grant of $350,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for where road and Blaththorn Lane intersection, storm sore improvement to alleviate flooding. Be it further resolved that the applicant is hereby designate Kellye Pippin Township Secretary and James M. Stigall, President of Board of Commissioners, as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between Aston Township and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in the obtaining the requested grant. I, yeah. In a form of a motion, I'm sorry.
Second. Okay, hold on. What?
He should be reading this.
All right, do, do the next paragraph first, please.
Okay. I, Kellye Pippin, duly qualified Secretary of Aston Township, Delaware County, PA. Hereby certify that the foregoing is a true and correct copy of resolution duly adopted by majority vote of the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting held on July 21st, 2021, and said resolution has been recorded in the minutes of Aston Township. It remains in effect as of this date. A witness thereof, I fix my hand, and attached to seal the ask to township.
That's fine. That's all. I just wanted to make sure we got those words in the minutes. So, I do have a motion. Any second?
Second.
We have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Line item F, I'm going to call on Commissioner Higgins for an emergency declaration, a resolution.
Thank you. Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, resolution number 2021-54, Declaration of an Emergency. Whereas within the last 30 days, the Aston Township Board of Commissioners has learned that the township building wherein the administrative offices and the police department are located contains the presence of mold. And whereas the Commissioners immediately took action to have the air quality tested and retained the services of a certified industrial hygienist to opine as to the current condition of the building, findings from the air quality testing, and provided a recommended course of action. And, whereas due to the expenses necessary to remediate the mold and ensure a safe working environment for township employees, as well as underlying condition of the building, the industrial hygienist has recommended evacuation of the building. And, whereas the Board of Commissioners believe that emergency action is needed to locate the township administrative offices, police department, and associated equipment in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of township employees and residents visiting the building. Now, therefore, the Aston Township Board of Commissioners hereby declare an emergency condition exists in the township municipal building, requiring immediate action to evacuate the building and secure temporary office space for the police department and administrative offices. Still further, the Board of Commissioners hereby authorize officials of Aston Township to act as necessary, to enter into a one-year lease without regard to bidding formality required by law, to relocate the Aston Township administrative offices and police department, during which time a permanent relocation can be determined. This declaration shall take place immediately, and that's in the form of a motion. This declaration shall take place immediately, and that's in the form of a motion.
I have a second. Just under comments here, I just want to say that there was, our five-year goal was to build three buildings, Firehouse, Public Works, and a township building. We are two-thirds of the way there, but due to the conditions of this building, we decided that in the best interest of everyone, we're going to push this a little further. So, we're going to relocate everyone, and then Public Works building, once they move, will be demolished, as well as this building. This just gives us the opportunity to kind of start emptying out this building before that demolition and get everybody up and running to keep the township flowing while we're in that transition period, so.
By the way, the declaration was signed tonight by every one of the Commissioners that's present here tonight, so. That's in the form of a motion.
May I have second questions or comments?
I just want to make one comment. Many of you have been out there on social media. This Board of Commissioners has worked diligently for the past two to three weeks for the safety of our employees, and we have met numerous times in executive session over this item. And I just want our employees to know that we are there for them and for you, the public. We have done our due diligence. We have not put this on the back burner. Many of us have not slept nights thinking about our employees and worrying about what's going on. So, those of all the people that are out on social media bashing the Board of Commissioners, I just have to say that you're absolutely wrong in what you've said. We've worked diligently, and it's for the safety of our employees. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next item, line item G, Consider a resolution for release of the letter of credit. Commissioner Dougherty.
All right. Aston Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Resolution 2021-55. Whereas, Section 1232.08 of the Aston Township Codified Ordinance allows for the posting of financial security for completion of improvements. And, whereas, Aston Investors Letter of Credit Number S913084 was posted a security agreement for completion of improvements for Taco Bell project located at 5012 Pendle Road, Aston, PA. And, whereas, the township engineer is satisfied with the completion of the required work. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Aston Township executes such action as required by the township engineer and the Board of Commissioners to release the letter of credit, S913084, duly adopted this 21st day of July 2021. Township of Aston, James M. Stigall, President, Board of Commissioners, attested to by Kellyanne Pippin, Township Secretary, in the form of a motion.
May I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item H, Consider a motion to enter into a lease agreement with Riddle Valley Industrial Property Associates. Commissioner Higgins.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the one-year lease agreement with Riddle Valley Industrial Property Associates for office space located at One New Road to temporarily relocate the township police department in the form of a motion.
I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item I, Consider a motion to enter a one-year lease agreement with Riddle Valley Industrial Property. Commissioner Higgins, again, please.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the one-year lease agreement with Riddle Valley Industrial Property Associates for office space located at One New Road to temporarily relocate the Aston Township administrative offices in the form of a motion.
Second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item J, Consider a motion to approve the township engineer to gather bids for repairs to Stormwater Basins. Commissioner Penegras.
Thank you. Consider a motion to approve the township engineers to gather bids for repairs to Stormwater Basins 8, 9, and 10, Houston Drive, storm sore, drainage, and erosion issues between Megan and Marie Circle and Scarlet Avenue pipe sections. I make a motion to approve this township engineers to gather bids for repairs to Stormwater Basins. I make a motion, in form of a motion.
I have second questions or comments? Just trying to get some water issues resolved. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item K, Consider a motion to approve the bid for tree clearing and grading for the amphitheater. Commissioner McGinn, please.
I make a motion to award the bid received for the tree clearing and grading at the amphitheater location to JMC Contractors of Glen Mills, PA, with a base bid plus alternative in the amount of $166,312. For background, or, oh, go ahead. I made the motion. I don't know if we second. I wanted to turn it over to Joe Fiscusso to explain the project.
Well, you made a motion. We have a second. We have questions or comments. So, now's the time.
Joe, if you could just elaborate for everyone with more on the project.
Yeah, so, this is a section of the township that lends itself very well to an amphitheater. It's, if anybody's been up at the Smiles and the Playground, it's the area behind there that goes down at a pretty steep grade to the creek. Spent a lot of time there as a kid. Anyway, the idea is that we will clear the trees. It's a little less than an acre. Clear the trees and grade it as a benching. If anybody's been to Rose Street Park, you know, that's benched for an amphitheater. We will not be building the stage or any of the appurtenances at this time. It's simply to clear the trees, do the grading, and sod the area once done, completed. So, you know, but at least events could be held there if the township wanted to. It's more area for the community day, that type of thing, so.
Thank you.
Just one more question, Joe. And what will the cost be to the township for this?
Yeah. So, the bid award was $166,312. We have a dollar-for-dollar grant here on this project. So, the, so this is money left over from the Smiles and the Playground grant. And so, the township portion of this is about half of that money. So, it's about $83,000.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item L, Consider a motion to approve the extension request for preliminary final land development of Dairy Queen Drive Thru. Commissioner Higgins.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the extension request for the preliminary final land development of Dairy Queen Drive Thru in the form of a motion.
I need a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item M, Consider a motion to accept a proposal for roofing, the rain gutters. Commissioner Dougherty, please.
I make a motion to approve the proposal from Artiter Roofing LLC to install new commercial rain gutters at the Aston Community Center with a cost not to exceed $22,960, in the form of a motion.
I have a second question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item N, Consider a motion to appoint a six-year term for the Aston Township Civil Service. Commissioner Dougherty.
I make a motion to appoint Lieutenant Joseph Preddy to a six-year term on the Aston Township Civil Service Commission in the form of a motion.
May I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item O, Consider a motion to appoint a six-year term to the Civil Service. Commissioner Berry.
I make a motion to appoint Mark Osborne to a six-year term as alternate of the, when the Aston Township Civil Service Commission. That's in a form of a motion.
Second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item P, Announce notice of intent to adopt an ordinance. Commissioner Berry.
I would like to announce intent to adopt an outdoor dining ordinance.
Thank you. Line item Q, man, we're really going up the alphabet today.
Oh, yeah.
Consider a motion to approve the refund for camp rainbow fees. Commissioner Dougherty.
I make a motion to approve the refund of $175 to Janice Custodio for camp rainbow fees paid, in the form of a motion.
May I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. R, Consider a motion to approve refund. Commissioner Dougherty, again.
I make a motion to approve the refund of $70 to Yu Young for camp rainbow fees paid, in the form of a motion.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Higgins for escrow releases.
Thank you. Escrows. Aston Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Resolution 2021-56. Whereas, Ordinance Number 240 and Ordinance Number 360 provide for escrow funds for completion of improvements. And, whereas, the township engineer and the new construction committee has approved the request for escrow funds released to Dish Wireless 12 Kent Road Cell Tower, fully a 1622-02, subaccount number 7765174279. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Aston Township executes such action as required by the Township Secretary and the President of the Board of Commissioners to release a sum of $2,993.75 payable to Dish Wireless 12 Kent Road Cell Tower, duly adopted the 21st day of July 2021, Township of Aston, by James M. Stigall, President, Board of Commissioners, and Kellyanne Pippin, Township Secretary, and that in the form of a motion.
May I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
And the last two are summary releases. The following amount is for engineering fees to be paid to Pinoni Associates for the month of July, a summary total of $11,964, in the form of a motion.
May I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
And the following amount is for engineering fees to be paid to Cerelli Associates, Inc., for the month of July, and that is a summary total of $920, in the form of a motion.
May I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
And that's all for the escrows.
Okay. All right. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor to the public. If somebody has something, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Come on, Mr. Marcus.
Good evening. My name is John Marcos, 2345 Weir Road. I know you're tired looking at me, but anyhow.
No, that's fine.
I put my two cents in it. I had a conversation with Mr. Fiscusso before the meeting, and appreciate his concern about it. I mean, he answered a lot of my questions I had before the meeting and all that. But the one question I have and all that, and I would like to pass, if you can, see it from here and all that stuff, my condition of the day, my patio in the back of it of my house. I don't know if you can see it. I can.
If you'd like to pass it through to the board?
I can pass it through. Yeah, you can pass it through. There you can, you know. Yeah, so it takes just one block of my patio and all that stuff. And that was, and I'm scared to death, another August coming up and like last year and all that, which is that happened. My question on this one is a little bit, I don't know, ordinary, extraordinary, or whatever, have you? Let's assume all that stuff in there, the grant we expect them to be done, to be approved, and other thing else that come up, and something's going to happen soon. But this thing, we promised a lot of times before and all that, which is, I let it go. But is there some emergency type of a thing in there to relieve us of? I did already the wall above there, you can see it, the wall outside of the patio and all that, to divert the water down. But I don't know what happened underneath there. Is anything possible way to, you know, to some kind of a fund, you know, to relieve it? Because I, myself, I can't afford it. Because I don't know how much it will cost and everything else to break that, to reinforce that, thank you, to reinforce that part of the cement, part of the patio, which is, you see it how it is down. It's about almost three and a half inches right now and down below. Because if it is something underneath it with the water, the existing water coming through and deteriorating and all that stuff, it's going to come down. And God knows, we don't know how long it's going to take, the procedure and all that stuff going on with the grant and all that to do the whole thing. But any emergency type of a situation, we can, you know, alleviate the problem a little bit more. Because one answer prevention worth the point of cure. You understand, everybody knows that.
We understand. And this has been a real priority for this board to try to get some things resolved. I mean, going back, we thought the Newsome situation might have resolved something, but then we got hit with those double storms, and it proved us to be, you need to keep doing something else. So, Mr. Fiscusso, Mr. Penegras, Commissioner Penegras have, you know, that's part of our daily discussion. I don't know if we can do anything temporary. Yeah. Yeah, we'll see what we can do, just to, like you said, I understand the sinkage and try to make it before it gets any worse. But I know we are, we were encouraged with the increment of the amount that they asked us to do, because that means it's a worthy project. And we're not waiting for that. We're designing things now. And we already discussed how we're going to do it. It's just a matter of Mr. Fiscusso kind of laying it out so that when we get the phone call that we have the funds, we're ready to go. So, we're trying to move as quick as we can on that.
He explained it to me. Explained to me, and I appreciate it and all that. But the thing is, because I don't know what the time, we don't know the time.
I understand. I understand. Why don't you, can you have a couple of minutes after the meeting that we can meet with Commissioner Penegras and maybe talk about something?
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay.
We're also getting ready to start. I forgot to mention, we're getting ready to start the Concord Square project, which is also part, parcel of fixing the issue down there, so.
And Joe, if you look at what we have between the grant and Concord Park, I mean, how much do we have potentially expended? Not just from township dollars, from grant dollars. I think we're over seven figures.
Oh, yeah.
Hi. I need your name and address.
Barry Pinkowitz, 3155 Richard Road, President of the Friends of the Chester Creek Branch, the Chester Creek Rail Trail. I just wanted to let the public know that we will be holding a public meeting on Thursday, September 9, for Phase 2 of the Chester Creek Trail Extension, starting at 7:00 PM at the community center. Wilson Consulting Group from Mechanicsburg, along with the Delaware County Planning Department, will be running the program. Wilson will be, Wilson Consulting will be showing the engineer's study along with the slide presentation, and residents are urged to attend. There'll be a question and answer period at that time for that section on that. So, the section that we're going to be talking about is from Creek Road in Middletown Township down to Bridgewater Road. The other thing that we're doing is we're trying to bring back the history on the Chester Creek Rail Trail. And what we're trying to do is sell bricks. We have a brick area and a garden area on the trail. And what we're trying to do is raise money to, if you go into state parks or national parks, you see the historical signs along there, and it tells about the history. And we have so much history along that trail, between the mills, between the bridges that used to be covered, the train stations, the trains. There is a lot of history. So, we wanted to bring that back onto the trail and let people know about the history and future generations to do that. So, what we're asking, if you're interested in doing that, please go on our website at chestercreektrail.org. Or if you're on the trail, you can see we have signs on the trail, and you can just take your phone right up to the sign, and it'll click you right into our website. So, and if you don't want a brick and you would still like to donate, you still can go onto that website and do that. I saw in the paper the other day, and I thought it was a neat idea. I wanted to bring it to the board. And the one community has a wall. And there are so many people that volunteer in this township, and they don't get recognized. And let's face it. I mean, yes, there's the Citizen of the Year, and it's a great award. But there's other people that have been with Aston AA, the Aston Township Lines Club, the Boy Scouts, the, all these organizations, all these organizations, Meals on Wheels and all that. I was thinking that if we could do a wall, maybe up by the Community Center, and each year to pick maybe five people in those organizations, and have a little plaque with their name on it and the organization, you know, I'm just throwing it out at you, but I thought it was a great idea, you know, because these people don't get the recognition that they deserve, you know, so, especially when they do it for 15, 20 years, or even longer, so, you know that, so, thank you.
We'll take that on the revisement. Thank you.
Barry, I would love to be at your meeting that day, because the Rails to Trails affects the back part of my ward. Sadly to say, I already committed to another organization volunteering. I won't be there, but please keep me informed of what's going on, because some of the residents along Mildred Lane are concerned about the Rails to Trails.
And I think they're going to try to talk about that at that meeting, and that's what we want to try to do, is have that meeting and talk about the problems or, you know, the good parts of the trail, you know, and how it's going to affect everybody along that trail, so.
Yeah, I'll just ask if you could keep me in the loop with that a little bit.
Sure, and this is only a first of, I'm sure, several meetings that we're going to be having along the way, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Nope. Thanks for the information. Keep us posted, please. Anyone else? Anything? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to move on. Commissioner Doherty, you have anything on other?
Just a few things. First, I want to congratulate Kelly Pippin, then I want to congratulate the Eagle Scouts who are here, and finally, since there's no meeting in August, I want to wish everyone a happy rest of the summer.
Thank you. Commissioner Pendegrass.
Yeah, same thing. I got a few things here. I would congratulate Kelly and Jack Wending and Nicholas for their Eagle Scout thing, and like John, just reading what John just said, everybody else have a good summer. We're done till September. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Berry.
I'd like to congrats to Jack Wending and Nicholas Zakirsky for their award for a Eagle Scout, and also, congratulations, Kelly.
Thank you. Commissioner Higgins.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate both of our two new Eagle Scouts. Job well done. Go Kelly, and everybody stay cool during the hot days of August. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett?
I got a whole lot of stuff. First of all, I have the library report from Stephen, the librarian, the info for the Friends of the Library book sale. The Friends of the Library will be having a small pop-up book sale outside the library on Thursday, July 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon, and again on Thursday, July 29th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Also, if you would mark your calendars, they're going to, Friends of the Library are going to be bringing back their bingo, which helps fund the library, and that date's going to be Saturday, October the 23rd, and that'll be at the Community Center. The next thing I have is a letter from Mary Ann Bullen, who is not able to be here tonight regarding Community Day. The 19th Annual Aston Township Community Day will be held on Saturday, October the 2nd, from 10:30 AM to 3:00 PM at the Aston Township Community Center. Rain date will be Saturday, October the 9th. Bike contest and bike rodeo will begin at 8:30. If participating, be at Big Lots by 8:00 AM. Rodeo is sponsored by Newman Nursing Program. To register for the bike contest, go to Aston Township webpage, or contact Maureen Dillon at astonbikecontest@gmail.com, or Don and Kathy at Gutman122@Verizon.net. Great prizes will be awarded for the best decorated bike, scooter, stroller, or wheelchair in age, three age groups. Parade will begin at 9:00 AM, hopefully at Newman University, and ending at the Community Center. Anyone interested in partaking in the parade, please contact myself at 610-494-5490, or email me at nboden@comcast.net. Immediately following the parade and opening ceremonies, the Business Expo will be held inside the Community Center. This is a great way to introduce and advertise your business. Anyone interested in the Business Expo, please contact Ralph Shikatana at ralphcorvusgroup.com, or the ABA webpage, astonba.com. Throughout the day, we have a number of different activities and games. Rides featured by Betty's Bounce, bumper cars, Giant Slide, Kids Ferris Wheel, photo booth, and many, many more. Kids can enjoy a funful day with a duck pond, face painting, pumpkin painting, rock painting, tattoos, cookie decorations, and a child's craft table. Our big feature again this year is our pony rides. Last but not least, our own Delco Spider-Man will join us to entertain and have pictures taken with the kids. This year, there will be a surprise. You'll need to come and see it, because we're not telling you. Come out and cheer our Police Department and Fire Department at our 3rd Annual Wing Bowl, as they try to beat each other at who can eat the most wings. Residents can walk around and enjoy trying samples of food from our food court, compliments of our many Aston eateries. There will be hot dogs and hamburgers, drinks provided by our local businesses, along with entertainment from our local musicians in Aston. With all the events going on this year, I need as many adult and student volunteers as possible, so if you could please give a little bit of your time and give Mary Ann a call at 610-368-3102, or email her at mimibull@aston, no, at Comcast.net. And then the last thing I have is Aston Township is currently seeking individuals to fill crossing guards positions for our upcoming school year. The rate of pay is $15.03 an hour. Hours may vary, but never more than two and a half hours a day. If interested, please stop by at the Aston Police Department and fill out an application to help keep our children safe. Have a nice summer. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner McGinn?
Yeah, first, again, I echo the comments and congratulate Nicholas and Jack on earning the rank of Eagle Scout. That's a very impressive honor, and an impressive fraternity of individuals have achieved that rank. Also, I'd like to commend our paving contractor. I think a lot of folks have seen in July a lot of work going on throughout the township. You know, we had a number of roads paved all throughout the township. I think they look very good, nice improvement done through the Liquid Fuels Fund. Joe Fiscusso, one thing I meant to ask before, but a question, just an update on the PennDOT paving program, because I know Bernie Highway was up this year. Any information from PennDOT on when that type of work will take place?
No, but I'll reach out to them again. I had seen some activity in some other locations, so I think that they're getting close, but I will reach out to them. Obviously, that road does not get any better.
Yeah. Yeah, and as we get updates from PennDOT there or anywhere else in the township, we'll try to make sure we post that on, you know, social media and other accounts, so folks know that's coming, but obviously, a net benefit going forward to have those roads improved. And lastly, a little bit in terms of de facto, kind of athletic director reminder for folks in the township. First of all, you know, I'd like to congratulate a couple of the Aston Middletown Little League teams. The 12U team did lose in the district finals, a hard-fought battle with Ridley, but represented Aston, and I'm sure Middletown Township as well. The 10U team actually won districts and the sectional, so they advance on the states, and best of luck to all those kids that are going to keep moving on, on Sunday, and representing Aston. And then just a reminder for folks in the township, and frankly, if you have children, family, friends that not just live in Aston, but it's eligible to folks that live in the neighboring communities. Thankfully, we have good sports organizations, so a lot of times you have children from Brookhaven, Chichester Community, Chester Heights, and neighboring communities, so we don't have a meeting in August. You know, we're fast approaching the start of the school year, fall sports, so signups are all out there, so just like to give plugs to all those organizations. Aston Youth Soccer, encourage folks to sign up there. I believe there's an early discount for most of these organizations too, so take advantage of it. Aston AA has football, cheerleading, and field hockey are all back this year. And then on the CYO side with St. Joseph's, they have cross-country from K through eighth grade, volleyball, soccer, and then there's a football program in coordination with St. Thomas in Chester Heights. So, if you have, you know, friends, family, children, take a look, all those things are easily found on the internet, and sign up. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fiscusso?
I have nothing.
Mr. Longback, anything? Okay. It's been a long meeting, got a lot accomplished. Although we are not meeting in August, we will be working to achieve some of these goals that we have put forth tonight. I want to congratulate Newman on their success with the purchase, and good luck with all your expansions that you're asking to do. It's a big asset to Aston when we can recognize your university, so. With that being said, I need a motion to adjourn. Thank you.